Hey, everybody. We're going to get started. Welcome to the Carson City School District Board of Trustees meeting. It's Tuesday, February 27th, and we're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order at 6:30. And we'll start out with item one, adoption of the agenda. Have a motion and a second. Do we have any board discussion on the agenda? Seeing none? Any public comment on the agenda? Seeing none? All those in favor? Aye. Any motion carries? Sorry. Item two is the flag salute. Trustee Varner. Item three is the superintendent's report. This is for information only. Superintendent Feeling.
Thank you, President Cassiopoe, and thank you, trustees. Just two things to mention from last week. We had our Community Connections event on Wednesday at Carson High School. Very well attended. Special thanks to Candy Robles and Josh Billings and much of the staff at Carson High for helping put that together. We had staff and students from other schools, the middle schools and some of the elementary schools as well, and it was just an outstanding event, community event. And clearly, having food really makes a difference. The two events we've done like this with food has really helped, on top of having really exciting things to see. If that is ultimately supposed to be our community event to kind of show our accountability to the strategic plan, I think that is a much more engaging format to show that than how we had been doing it for many years. And then Friday, I got to see Mr. Sonamaker and many of his kids at the Northern Zone Honor Choir event, and that was pretty impressive across the board. I wish I had talent, and I don't. So, that is all I have.
We could wish that for all of us, right? All right. Thank you. I appreciate it. We're going to move on to item four, board reports, board member comments. This again is for information only. Let's start out with the school reports. Do we have anyone here from Carson High? Do we have the students? They're coming? Okay. Oh, they will not be here now.
No, I heard that they will not be coming, and so I got the report.
Okay.
All right.
Go ahead. Thanks, Molly.
All right. Sorry about that.
No, no, no. Thank you.
Okay. So, they apologize, but the CHS School Board reps will not be able to attend tonight, so I will be doing the report. Multiple CHS clubs and courses went to EVMS and CMS to talk to the eighth graders. It was a great experience and an opportunity. Class selections took place last week, and congratulations to the following. And I apologize if I ridicule their names. Senior President Paulina Perez-Roke, Senior Vice President Leah Shine, Senior Secretary Alex Nerschka, Senior Treasurer Vanessa Villegas. Then for juniors, Junior President Kyle Allen, Junior Vice President Abby Mehaff, Junior Secretary Maddie Barino, Junior Treasurer Avery Coleman, Junior Representative Devon Kelner, other junior representatives Johnny Alvarito. Then for sophomore class, Sophomore President Cooper Feeling. Huh. Yay! I'm glad I didn't ridicule that name. Sophomore Vice President Andrew Wilken, Sophomore Secretary Jordan Rubeaker, Sophomore Treasurer Taylor Eckland, Sophomore Representative Anna Shane, and congratulations to everyone. On the notes of sports, the cheer team took ninth place at Nationals. Girls' softball, Boys' baseball, and Boys' golf has started up, and everybody is wishing them good luck this season. Boys' and girls' basketball has ended, and congratulations to Nate Talbert, who was named Girls' Basketball Head Coach of the Year. So, congratulations to him, and congratulations that he stepped in. Very good job. And that ends the report.
Great. Thank you very much. How about we move on to Pioneer Academy? Do we have any pioneer representatives? Yep. Just make sure it lights up green on the base.
Good evening to everyone here in the U.S. My name is Maggie Uzell, the new student rep for Pioneer Academy. And here are the activities for Pioneer Academy. Our speech and debate team went to Elko on President's Weekend. This was our last normal tournament of the season, and it was great to see all their team grow and improve. And our coach here would like to say a few words.
Hi. I know this is not conventional. Jill Schufelt, Pioneer Academy Speech and Debate Coach, but I didn't want to make Maggie announce this about herself. Maggie Uzell took fourth place in Napa Storytelling at our tournament. We also took third place in sweepstakes points for storytelling for the entire season because Maggie placed top six in storytelling at every single tournament that the event was offered. And I thought that was the coolest thing ever because she single-handedly won us that award. We are so proud of her, so I wanted to embarrass her by having everybody clap for her.
Hey, Maggie. Anyway, moving on. Our next ski trip will be on March 6th, and last week, we had our first discovery block day on Wednesday, and Pioneer Juniors took the ACT test today. Thank you to all PHS staff and members for making this happen. Counselor Carrie Jordan has been visiting middle schools and sharing enrollment information with upcoming freshmen. And our next Panther Painting Pizza and Punch Day will be on Thursday, March 21st, from 6:00 to 8:00. We will be donating the proceeds from our month's events to the Eagle Valley Middle School Robotics Team to help run their trip to Houston on the World Festival in April. And thank you to the Greater Nevada Credit Unit for their representative, Stephen Paudor, who will provide school-wide positivity party. Teacher Stephanie Walker has been randomly selected by the GNCU Carson Cares Award Committee to receive the treats. Pizzas, drinks, and cookies were provided for the staff and students, and it was delicious. Thank you. And that concludes Pioneer Academy's activities and announcements.
Great. Thank you, Maggie. And again, congratulations. That's exciting. Good for you. Let's see. Next announcement, how about Nevada Association of School Boards? Do we have an update? Rich?
I have just a reminder of the upcoming training that's going to be on March 16th in Reno. It's from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and it's at the St. Sure Plus Hotel, 1918 Terminal Way. And it's on legislative readiness and a strategic approach to the legislature. And then on the 29th of this month, which is this coming Thursday, the Professional Development Committee is meeting to make the final selection on where the next conference is going to be held. It's going to be held in Reno, and there's two places right now being considered. So, the final selection we made on Friday night. And that's my report for NASB.
All right. Great. Thank you. Let's see. How about board announcements? We'll start with trustee Crossman.
Sure. For Fremont Elementary School, Dr. Ward lets me know that next week is Reading Week, and so it starts off with Bingo for Books Tuesday at 4:30. And also, they will be hosting bedtime stories over Zoom for all their students all next week. So, between the hours of 6:30 and 7:30, they will have four different staff members reading bedtime stories to students who want to log in, which I think is just the cutest idea ever. So, I hope that the kids all enjoy that. Also, the students will be doing a Pi the Principal and Vice Principal for Reading Minutes. And by Pi, she says they mean everything from Cool Whip to ranch dressing to dessert. It's going to be an extravaganza. So, I'm not sure I'd want the ranch dressing in the face. Yeah, that's just sad. So, anyway, also, I wanted to... That concludes my report for Fremont. And I also wanted to take this time to thank Ananda Campbell. Yesterday, she hosted a guest speaker, Colonel Jade Campbell, and there is a relation there. He is a 1991 Carson High grad who has served 33 years in the Marine Corps, and he spoke to a full library of students from Avid classes, the Early Childhood class, the ROTC class, and AP enrichment about his experience. And his talk really focused on keeping all of your options open because when he graduated from Carson High, he didn't plan to go to college, but he had a counselor who told him to take the ACT anyway before he left because it wasn't required at that time. And because he did that, even though he enlisted in the Marines after a few years, he was able to apply for the ROTC scholarship and earn his mechanical engineering degree and then become a very talented helicopter pilot in the Marine Corps. So, I thought the kids really enjoyed it, and it was really a great thing. The other thing I'd like to report for the board's information is that I attended the Gate Advisory Meeting last Friday, which is still... That committee is just going along great. And one of the things that I was excited about when they look at the nominations and identification of Gate students using Carson City's alternate identification process, we are still finding more kids, and we are identifying more kids as Gate. And it's beginning... The percentage of kids identified is beginning to more closely match the demographics of our students in the district, which I think is a good thing. So, I just wanted to share that with board members. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Varner.
I'd just like to comment on the Community Connections meeting. I was able to attend that, and like Superintendent Feeling said, it was very well attended. A lot of students were there. They were really amazing, the presentations they were making. And so, I just wanted to give a shout out to all the kids and the staff who made that event possible. Anyway, also, I wanted to thank Dr. Lennox and her staff, especially Jeffrey Hendricks and Carolyn Atkins, for taking the time to meet me this last week to discuss the next stop or next step program and other support programs they have going on there. It was a very informative meeting, and I was very impressed by the staff there and all the programs they got going on. And just wanted to give them a thank you for everything they're doing for the students of Carson City. And I have a report for Boardwork Bray. Principal Raketa wanted to let everyone know that next week is their Reading Week. They have a lot of fun activities planned, including dress-up days, reading challenges, guest readers, and their family reading night is going to be on March 7th from 5:00 to 6:30 p.m. And she would like everybody just to go ahead and check parent square and check for the messages that are coming out on that parent square. And for Fritsch Elementary, Principal Brown would like to congratulate, and I know I'm going to blow this name, but I apologize, Estefani Marino, Marina, one of their awesome first grade teachers for being selected, the Carson City Teacher of the Month for February for the Rotary Club. So, congratulations to her. And that ends my report.
Rich, trustee Walt.
So, for Empire Elementary School, Mr. Tuttle would like to report that they still have 47 students who have perfect attendance so far this year at Empire Elementary School. So, congratulations to those 47 students. That's pretty good. They're also... They're celebrating that for sure. And overall, their overall chronic absentee rate is slipping, unfortunately. They're at 14.7, which I believe they were at 13%. They were one of the lowest schools. So, it is slipping a little bit, but they still have a chance to get things turned around with a lot of folks out for winter break and extended vacations. They are surely hoping that they recover from this. Sorry. For Carson High School, the jumpstart applications are due March 1st. Students must have a 3.0 GPA, good attendance, and have received 75% or better in Algebra II in order to qualify. But the applications are due in March 1st. Mr. Carstens, thank you for your report. And so, Mr. Carstens reports that today was ACT testing. They were preparing. A lot of staff members were working on dotting all the i's and crossing all the t's to ensure positive testing environments for the students today. I do know my son participated and was exhausted at the end. So, then they are shifting from winter sports into spring sports, and it doesn't feel like it quite just yet, but they are out there. Golf and basketball and softball, and they're hoping that the field stay clear of the cold and the white stuff. And for track as well, I failed to mention track, and that they are looking forward to some green grass. That ends my...
Great. Thank you, Molly. Trustee Clapham.
Thank you. From Ms. Crookshanks, Mark Twain. She wanted to let everybody know they're excited to start Reading Week next week. They'll be celebrating all the students as readers throughout the week with events and dress-up days. They'll conclude the week with a family bingo night on Friday, March 8th from 6:30 to 7:30, and Mayor Bagwell will be at the bingo night to read some books. And that concludes my updates. I don't have one from Carson Middle School tonight.
Right. Thanks, Matt. Trustee Walker.
Well, everyone must be on the same schedule because Seelager is going to celebrate Reading Week next week also. They're going to kick it off with a magician, so Mrs. Zona thinks that will really inspire everybody. They have a robust list of dress-up days and events. So, if you have a child at Seelager, make sure that you find out what those dress-up days are so your child can participate.
Great. Thank you, Mike. Trustee Ramirez.
From Eagle Valley Middle School, Dr. Conley reported that they raised over $1,000 during the Hootie fundraiser for the LEGO Robotics. And today, they had an annual volleyball game, eighth grade girls versus Eagle Valley staff. They split the games, but the staff beat the girls with a bigger point differential. So, yeah. Coach Olaflyn, I'm sorry if I mispronounced the last name, took six students to participate at the HOSA competition in Reno, and I do not know the results, but we wish them well. So, hope they did well. And then I also had the pleasure of going with Superintendent AJ Feeling and the staff to meet with the Latino community last Sunday, and we were very well received. The parents were very thankful that we were out there meeting with them, and they had the opportunity to talk to Superintendent. I think it was a wonderful opportunity for us to let them know how much we need them to be part of their children's education. So, thank you, Superintendent Feeling, and also thank you to the staff who went, who was the principal for Mark Twain Elementary School, Mrs. Shulies Crookshanks, and then Dr. Tanya Scott, and thank you for providing the interpreters, Lourdes Magoin, I believe, and Marian Ochoa and Christina Born. I just want to say thank you for spending time out of their weekend to go and talk to the families and just let them know how much we want them to be part of our team. So, that concludes my report.
Great. Thank you, Lupe. The Pioneer Report was covered already. Thank you. So, I just wanted to just, again, remind everybody about Reading Week. And if anybody wants to participate reading to a class, I don't know if all the schools still have openings, so they've done a great job filling those slots. But if you're interested, contact one of the elementary schools and let them know you're interested, and most likely, you'll be able to read to a class. Today, I had the opportunity to go to Seelager to visit with Principal Zona and some of the staff just to, you know, chat a little bit about it, get updated on what's going well, and things seem to be going really well at Seelager. Paula Zona said, in fact, while I was there, one of the students there was... made a little art project, if you will, got involved in some recycling and whatnot, did some of that, and he came in and presented to her just to show her what he did, and he was super excited about it. So, I just got to be there and just, you know, see that and talk to some of the other teachers. And really, I think, I was telling them, some years you go and people kind of bombard you in a good way and just, you know, with things that are going well, with things that aren't going so well. And from my perspective, the people coming up to me, there's been a lot of positive insights and whatnot. It sounds good. I know our teachers and our staff are working hard, and we appreciate what they're doing. But to hear directly from them that, you know, the challenges are there, but they're doing well, and their schools are excelling, and we're happy to hear that. So, I just want to thank Seelager for hosting me for the hour I was there today. And yeah, and so that concludes my report. I'm going to move on to item five, association reports. Okay? No association reports tonight? So, we're going to move on to public comment. Do we have any in-person public comment? Jen Ward, please come up. And again, we'll just remind everybody for public comment, we're limited to three minutes. So, please introduce yourself, and we'll start with Dr. Ward.
Good evening, members of the board. Jennifer Ward for the record. I just want to come and voice my opinion. As many of you know, I have lots of opinions. I know you guys are talking about the budget coming up in a future item that's for discussion only. I just want, as we get into the budget discussion, to reflect on the plate of our educators, including our administrators. As you know, as a principal, I wear many hats, and I'm not going to bore you with the long list of all the things that come our way as principals. But one of the things that comes to mind as we talk about the budget is our curriculum coordinators, in particular for our math and our ELA positions. Right now, the idea of having all of the struggle of keeping the rigor and fidelity to the proficiency scales on my hat or my plate for both our curriculum and our assessments, when we have our curriculum coaches currently doing that practice, I just want to just throw that out as an important part of the educational practice, is to have experts in the field to be able to guide our teaching staff in that creation of those materials. I know from previous life experience in our district, sometimes we get things going, like math coaches, and as soon as the going gets good, we lose the funding, which means we end up losing the momentum that we've had. And in particular, with math and ELA in elementary, we are in the thick of creating good assessments, rigorous outlines of pathways to proficiency for our students. And I'm just hoping that we can preserve that for the next two years in those positions, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
So, I apologize. I'm not smarter than the timer. You actually have one more minute.
I don't actually need anything, believe it or not. I can be all wrapped up in two.
I was hoping you would be done in two.
Yeah. Thanks, Mike. No, I just, I appreciate the hard decisions that you will have to make in the upcoming years, but I just want everyone to know that those professionals are part of our team. So, thank you.
No, thank you. Thank you very much. Any additional public comment? Seeing none, we'll close in-person public comment. And just for the record, I'll let you know that we did receive one email public comment, and that's been entered into the record.
Mr. Chair, just based on what the agenda says, you do need to say the name of the...
Oh, I'm sorry. And I don't have that... Do I? Oh, I have it. Correction, I do have. It was all two feet away from me, and I didn't see it. It's the public comment that's being recorded into the record is from Elizabeth Hase, H-A-A-S-E. Going to move on. We're going to close public comment now and move on to item seven, discussing and possible action to approve three Southwest Gas easements for the following Carson School District schools. Mark Twain Elementary School, located at APN 00210146, Fremont Elementary School at APN 010, excuse me, 010, 04130, and Carson Middle School at APN 00317101. Approval of this item authorizes the superintendent to execute the subject easement documents, which if approved, will provide approval for Southwest Gas to install and maintain a natural gas pipeline or pipelines and appurtenances through the above-described properties owned by the Carson City School District, and this is an action item. So, for possible action.
Can you guys hear me?
Mr. West.
So, good evening, trustees, President Cassiopoe. I'm joined here by senior engineer for Southwest Gas, Mr. Clarence Ramsey, to answer any further questions. But background on the situation, so I was able to meet my equivalent with the Douglas County School District, Mr. Phil Demus, and he had mentioned that Southwest Gas had a coil program or customer-owned yard line program, which is the ability to replace and upgrade underground piping at no cost to the school district. Seems like a win-win situation. And so, I reached out originally May 11th to Southwest Gas. We conducted a site assessment October 31st, and we have a tentative plan of Mark Twain in Fremont being worked on the spring break and Carson Middle School sometime in the summer.
Do we have any questions for the presenters? Molly and Rich discussing.
I didn't know if you wanted to go first, but I have...
Rich, you can go first. Go ahead.
Yeah. I have a couple. On the agreement that we would be signing, if I can find it here, it says that we would be responsible for any damage that occurred. It's on the grant of easement on the very last paragraph. Except as provided above, grantee agrees to pay all direct damages which are caused by the grantee's exercise of the rights herein granted. And I didn't know what that really meant. I mean, what would we be on hook for?
Southwest Gas is the grantee.
Okay. So, we're the grantor.
Make sure that's right. Southwest Gas is the grantee.
Okay. Great. Then I know one concern on the email we got was some kind of potential harm to the staff or students from putting this line in. We have an existing line in there now. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And so, we were just replacing that line.
Which is correct.
So, in other words, there would be no additional cause or damage to any of the staff or students. Is that correct?
That's correct. And it would also be installed when no students were on the grounds.
Can you just get a little closer? They need to be able to hear you for record.
Yes. So, there would be no one on the grounds.
Sorry. Hate to interrupt you twice. Just give us your name again for the record.
Yes, my name is Clarence Ramsey. I'm here to... Yes, my name is Clarence Ramsey. I'm here to represent Southwest Gas. And basically, the program dictates that we are responsible for all the costs. We will, and the way it goes now is the school district is currently responsible. They have to do a survey every five years. They're responsible to fix anything that they find that's destroyed or needs replaced, which that would go away. So now Southwest Gas would do an annual survey. We would keep it up. We are the experts. We, but basically, it saves the district money.
And it just runs to the school, or does it run through the school property to some other areas?
What, first of all, what happens is, on the smaller ones, Mark Twain and Fremont, well, it'll basically, from the MSA to the building, which is now responsibility of the district, will become, we will replace it, and we'll bring the meter right up to the building, so that'll go away, so that'll eliminate any responsibility the school board has for that.
Sounds like a win for me.
Thank you. So is this then grant of easement forever, correct? Okay, 'cause it didn't have that. All right, and then, oh, I lost it. Oh, the timeline for the construction of it. You said you're gonna start during spring break. Do you anticipate finishing during spring break as well?
One, two days max.
Okay.
Now, the Carson Middle School will take a little longer. That's why we're gonna do that during the summer. It'll, week and a half, two weeks. And understand that the easements, we don't own it, it's still your property. It just gives us a right to install and maintenance our pipe.
Just a question regarding the pipe, because this will be new pipe. Is it better quality? I don't know anything about what kind of pipes they're used, but is this a better, safer type of piping?
Well, we're, basically, we're gonna get rid of all your old steel line. It's obsolete, we don't even use that unless we use it for high pressure now. And what it is, is we're doing, we're using PE, polyethylene. And it, as a matter of fact, it just got upgraded to an 8400. So it's top-of-the-line, it's the newest thing out, and it, and that's what we'll put in there the best. We will maintenance, we will keep it up, we will install it, and we will inspect it annually.
Rich.
Yeah, thank you. Is there future plans to do the other schools?
I have been doing coil for quite a few years now. I've done, as a matter of fact, South Lake, South, the larger school, their high school, we're currently doing that. We'll be finishing that up in spring. I'm currently designing the DMV, so I've done quite a few projects, coil projects, and they all have turned out quite well.
So Robert Ford, your counterpart at Southwest Gas, mentioned that those were the only three schools that needed the coil program.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional board questions? Just to clarify, 'cause we were trying to figure out the speaker thing. Clarence, just because the one email comment we did receive, they were concerned about safety, and I don't, you probably don't know, but we're, we're, well, you do know what you're replacing. We got the MSA, they're replacing that, they're running the meter just right up against the building.
Correct.
So there's not like X number of feet, substantial feet of new line or anything. It's just maybe a little reroute to get it closer to the building.
Correct.
And I assume that's kind of the same thing with the other schools, but are there, you know, are there any new lines coming in in the three schools that are, you know, quite a bit different than what we have right now?
The two small schools, not much at all. Carson, because it's a bigger school, and the way we do it is we go in each building, we verify all the loads, and what we will do is we'll separate the buildings that'll help eliminate all the house line, and we'll run meters up to those buildings. So it'll shorten everything, it'll become all our responsibility.
Okay, thank you. Okay, no more questions from the board? This is an action item. Going on?
I guess I will. I move that the Carson City School Board of Trustees authorize the superintendent to execute the easement documents for Mark Twain Elementary School, Fremont Elementary School, APN 01-04-30, and Carson Middle School, APN 003-171-01, which provides approval for Southwest Gas to install and maintain a natural gas line, or gas pipeline, or pipelines. Joe, what's that word? Appurtenance, okay, thank you.
It means all the extra stuff that goes with it.
Through the above-described properties owned by the Carson City School District.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Motion and a second, any board discussion? Seeing none, any public comment on this item? Seeing none, Ward, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here.
I appreciate your time as well. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to item eight, annual report from Carson High School on programs, supports for students, and celebrations. This is for discussion only, and we have Principal Carstens.
Good evening, trustees, President Cassioppo. Hey, Jay. First off, we're doing our annual report, and a lot of times it's regarding AP and Jump Start, but we have really three really big programs that we do, is AP Jump Start and our CTE program. And before I start, because I have a lot of people that make me look good, so I just want to make sure I recognize them. Bridget Gordon really made this PowerPoint, and Josh Barlow, he's in charge of our Jump Start, and Candy Robles with CTE, and so I really appreciate their work. And like I said, I'd be stumbling around on my own words up here if it wasn't for them, so thank you very much. And if I mess anything up, I expect you guys to come on up here and correct me. That's what I said, right? Josh? It's a J, it's a J, I mean, really? I am sorry about, I really do know his name. I've learned a lot of names this year, and I, anyway, I'm learning new ones all the time. And also, if you want to, you could have this presentation all to your own. Ms. Gordon, she made a little QR code there, so if you want to take a little picture of it and take it home with you and show everybody else, that's A-OK. So we'll talk a little bit, oh, I gotta introduce my students here, too. Aggie Campbell, right here. Sophomore. I know his name, didn't know his grade. Jackie Estrada, wonderful Jackie. I've met her a couple times this year, great kid. And JT Heaton over there on the end, and they'll be, they'll be talking about their experiences as well. So just, and I believe, yeah, is her name Angela? Is here as well. She was, she was a former student at Carson High School, who has since graduated, and she will be talking about her experience as post-grad. So I will try to do as little talking as I can so you can hear the students as much as possible. All right, AP, AP is really, it's one of the most rigorous programs out there to prepare kids for college, is really what that, what that comes down to. It's advanced placement. We have a lot of advanced placement courses, and you'll, I think it's 18 total advanced placement, which is quite a few, and later on in the presentation, you will see that, how well our students score on our advanced placement tests. And really, the goal, they scored on a one-to-four, or one-to-five scale, and when students receive a score of three or higher, they will end up getting credit for that, for that class at the college level. And they talk a little, we talk a little bit up there about our pre-AP. We're shifting from an honors program to a pre-AP, and what that pre-AP does is it better, better prepares our students for the advanced placement program, hence pre-AP, so. Jump Start, I'm sure everybody is pretty familiar with Jump Start by now. Our partner's at Western Nevada College. We partner with them, and a lot of students take this concurrently, and they earn credits right away. You don't have to actually, you know, pass a end-of-course test. They'll have assessments all the way through that you have to pass. But they usually, right around 11th grade, we had 10th grade cohorts. I don't know if we are going to have that again. We're still looking at all the funding and all that fun stuff. But really, you gotta have good grades, and gotta finish that Algebra II for, to be considered for the Jump Start program. And again, the biggest thing with this one, where advanced placement is really nationwide, where you can take those credits wherever you go, our Jump Start program really focuses in on the state of Nevada, where they're gonna, their plan is to finish that bachelor's degree. And by the end of their time in the Jump Start program, they could earn that associate's degree. So it gives them a really good start on their program. Career and Technical Education, this is our third really big program that we have here at CHS. And really, you're talking about skills that these students will bring into a high-skill, high-wage. I demand, yes. I did, you know, and you have to have a good team behind you, because you can't do this by yourselves. And really, they're going away from a three-year program to a two-year program for CTE, and students can really get involved in a few more if they so choose. And it's just, it's a great program. Lot of different avenues that students can take, and I think we have, we'll talk about the CTSOs also, Career and Technical Student Organizations, a little bit later. The pros, there's not a whole lot of cons to these. It's just, these are the different things that are available to students that they can take advantage of them. And really, what I wanted to point out, the biggest thing about the advanced placement program is if you look at that last star there, even if students score a one or two, that means they're not getting college credit, but if you look at that statistic, they're 85% better than non-AP students in college. And so really, what that tells me is these advanced placement courses, they are really preparing these kids for those college-level classes. It's extremely rigorous. There is a specific training that we have to send our teachers to, and really, when we get that training, they are going to be able to teach at that high level, that very extremely rigorous level, and be able to have these kids be successful there and beyond. Jump Start, the pros, I mean, it's direct route to our local colleges. It's really nice to be able to have that, you know, the associate's degree. And really, kind of the difference is, sometimes students just kind of want to maybe leave their high school career behind and start that Jump Start and start getting those college credits, but they'll be able to earn their high school credits as well, so they'll be able to still graduate from high school. And where, if students are really, you know, still interested in college, but they still want to be heavily involved in the school, that AP, those AP classes really keep them at the school. So there's pathways for a couple of different kinds of kids that have different goals. And, you know, it might be, you have kids that are extremely involved in student government or sports or different activities that keep them at the school, and that's, Jump Start is a great plan for them. If they may not be involved in some of those activities, then we go the Jump Start, Jump Start route. If you look at CTE, with those kids that are involved in CTE, the biggest thing I want to point out, 98.7% grad rate. That's kind of impressive there, so it's better than nine out of 10. You gotta have a fraction of a kid there, too, so pretty good stuff. And again, an opportunity to earn free college credit. Plenty of opportunities for kids there. AP student data, you can see, so we have right around 2,300 students, so 367 of those students are taking AP courses there for 644 tests. And the other thing I did want to point out is, if you look at our demographics, 50% Caucasian, 38% Hispanic, those are our two really, those are our predominant demographics for our school. And if you look at about 10 years ago, nine, 10 years ago, that discrepancy was quite a bit more. It was almost like a 70% to 30%. So we're closing that gap, and the goal is to continue to close that gap as we move forward in offering our AP courses. So it does tend to mimic what we have in our, as our demographic in our entire school, but again, we're still trying to close that gap a little bit more. And costs, the foundation, the foundation has been just a wonderful resource to Carson High School, and I just want to make sure we point that out. They pay, help pay for AP, they help pay for Jump Start, and it wasn't, if it wasn't for them, our students would have a lot more money coming out of their pocket. But they have this opportunity, a great opportunity, not just to earn college credit, but to get all that stuff paid for. Our pass rates, if you look at this, and you look at a few, you look at statistics, Calc BC, you got chemistry in there, both of our English courses, government, and really, what I want to point out is you compare our scores to the global average. And our scores in many of our, many of our programs, Spanish up there, I mean, we even have AP Research. I mean, I know when I was in high school, AP Research was probably not my jam, but we have 100% of our kids that were in AP Research. They passed it, and so I really want, I don't want to just be the best in Nevada at this, but let's be the best in the nation, or globally. That's really the goal. We want these kids to succeed and achieve at high levels. That's really the goal there. Jump Start student data, 111 students taking Jump Start, pretty good demographic. And again, our, the, if you look at our Caucasian and our Hispanic rate, 57.7% and 27.9. Nine, 10 years ago, that was about 80/20. And so we were just looking at that data earlier today. Ms. Macy shared that with us, so thank you, Cheryl, for doing that. So it's, we are closing the gap. We have a little bit, a little bit further to go with this, but the goal is to continue to close that gap to better mimic our overall demographic of our school. And again, costs, students pay for the cost of their books, but can apply for a scholarship provided by the foundation to reimburse cost, and, but that's it. I know that our district pays for them to take these courses, so thank you very much, and I hope and pray that that is still there in the future. Speaking of funding sources, right, Ms. Ward? One thing I do want to point out, Mr. Barlow did this, did this graph, did a little study from last spring until this fall, and the number of Ws, Ds, and Fs, so with, W is a withdraw. We all know what Ds and Fs are, but that has been, that, those numbers are coming down, and it's a very low percentage of those students that are not successful in those Jump Start classes. CTE student data, you know, we already pointed out, the 98.7% grad rate. And really, if you look at that, 1,991 students are enrolled in at least one CTE course. That's a fairly large number that we are extremely proud of. And then if you look at the special populations, this one really is very close to our, the demographics of our school with 47.7% Hispanic and 44.2% Caucasian. So, and if you look at that all... So, and if you look at that also, our free and reduced lunch students, um, 31% uh, are represented in there. So it's a, it's a very high percentage of that. And that's, again, high skill, high demand, high wage. All right.
So one of the things I'm wondering is I'm looking at all the demographics and the girls are really outpacing boys in interest in all of these programs. And so I guess as I'm listening, I'm wondering, number one, how are we kind of trying to get these boys to jump in and participate in one or more of these programs? But then also in a lot of them, the Hispanic number is pretty low also. And so it's kind of, I'm wondering, how do we get these kids better involved? Because you get a kid going to Jumpstart, you start them on that pathway. You know, it's just a seamless transition, so I, I'm sure you probably don't have the answer, but I'd be.
We're, we're starting. Um, what I do want to point out is we, we did an engagement survey. And we surveyed students that really weren't a part of any of these programs to see, hey, what, what is it that you're missing here? Is there something that we can offer at the school that would, you know, first off, if they're, if they're involved in a program in the school, I mean, research tells us that they are, um, that they are going to be a lot more engaged in the school. Whether it's, you know, CTE, whether it's certain electives, whether it's fine arts, whether it's sports, other activities. And, you know, we, we, in, in doing that survey, we, we came across a lot of students that, that talked about, you know, working with their hands a little bit more, you know, construction, um, auto body, auto shop. Those are, those are some of the answers that, that we got from them. What we also know is that, uh, even the students that are, that may not be extremely engaged in school. Um, one of the things that we committed to is to try to be outside our classroom doors all the time welcoming students in. And over 80% of those students that responded to that survey said that was one of their favorite parts of the day. So we're trying to be more welcoming to our students on a daily basis, making sure that we know them by name, greeting them. And really asking them what, what they want and trying to figure out how we can, uh, how we can work our schedule so that we can offer more of what maybe our less engaged students want. So maybe I don't quite have the answer, but we're working on it.
Sure.
Sorry, while you're on the CTE, so a few slides back, you had said that CTE is moving to a two-year program versus a three-year program? Is that a, I'm not.
State thing.
It's a state thing, state federal, okay. So are they offering less classes? Are they, I'm taking notes, I'm sorry. Um, are they offering less classes? Are they shortening the classes? Are they taking some away? I just, my concern would be, and I know we probably don't have any control, but if these are classes that these kids like and we're making it smaller.
We still, still have the same pathways. It's just takes less time to. Take the, you wanna, she's smarter than I am.
This is Candy Ruble, CTE Coordinator. Um, so, oh, no, we're not gonna bend. So, no, I'm good. I'm good. Yeah, I just don't want to fall over. Oh, thanks. Sorry. Um, the CT programs of study go, are, have changed from three-year to two-year programs of study just for the assessment period. So instead of students taking workplace readiness assessment and end of program assessment at the end of their third year, they take it at the end of their second year. And then they can take up to two years of advanced studies. Or industry recognition credential or internship, so.
It's not ending.
It does not end, no. It actually, um, creates an opportunity for students to take more than one program of study. And to meet the college and career-ready benchmark. So it's a good thing.
And then if you're gonna cover this, tell me to stop talking. But what kind of classes are in that? Is, uh, cause I was thinking like maybe it was auto body, that kind of stuff, but you'll get there. Okay, I'll, I'll stop talking.
So with our CTSO, our Career and Technical Student Organizations, they kind of match our, our programs of study as well. And so we'll, we'll get there. This one. Yeah.
Are you good?
I'm good. Uh, so, so these, if, if you look at that, um, you know, you have the R, ROTC, um, the HOSA, which is the Health, uh, Health Careers, Skills USA, which, that's probably with the ag mechanics, ag, ag welding. Nope, just kidding. FFA does that. So what do we have that matches Skills USA? Graphic design.
Engineering, the engineering programs of study.
Engineering. So a lot of this, and, uh, FBLA are business leaders. And one that they are adding in the future will be the, uh, Technology Student Association. Uh, because they do cybersecurity as well, so. And now I would love to turn it over to our students because they are way more engaging. So Aggie, would you, should we start with you? We'll start over here with the older kids.
Hi, I'm Jackie Estrada. I'm a senior this class, um, this year. Um, I've been taking AP courses since my sophomore year. Um, I'm up to five AP courses. This year I'm taking, I'm taking AP Lit, but I have taken AP Language, AP Environmental, AP, AP Spanish, World History. So those are, um, some of the courses that I have taken, but I know that a lot of other students have taken more. The opportunity with AP courses is that I get to experience college a little bit more. So I come from any, from the ESL program. Um, I passed the ESL program in two years. So being in AP courses can be challenging, but at the same time, it helps me kind of get the experience that I would want for college and be ready. The word look, um, it's not heavy, it's mostly class. So it's a lot of engagement during class, which is the reason why I like taking AP courses, uh, mostly my AP class. Mr. Macy, the way that he sets his classroom is that it's like us, you. He stays in the middle of the classroom and he talks to all of us. So we all get to see him teaching the class and experience with everybody what we're feeling. Reading is amazing and then like the assignments that come with all of that prepares us for the final test. And I think that test at the end by May prepares you to kind of experience how finals feel in college. Because you have to go over everything that you have learned over the year to pass the test. Um, however, they prepare us for the test, like the month before, we're taking tests, we're taking essays, we're practicing multiple choice, the rules, what you're looking for, what they're looking for on the test for you to pass the test. I would say that it's a great opportunity for students just because they get to experience a different level of school. And the engagement of class is, it's amazing. And the workload for home, it's not that heavy. I would say that you take home a package, you look at it, you read the book, you fill in whatever you have to fill in for the assignment. You come back, you go over with the teacher about what you have learned and it kind of just, it teaches again what you have already read, but with that experience of a teacher saying, okay, did you understand this part? Do you need more help on this part? Should we look at it a little bit closer? Do we have to work on it a little bit longer? But overall, they prepare you for the main test and I think it prepares all of us to be ready for college.
Thank you. Who's next?
Hi, so, um, I'm Jake DeHeaton, I'm currently in the Jumpstart program at CHS. And, uh, I'm a junior this year, so my, our junior year for Jumpstart, you'd be, you're at the high school the whole time. Um, you're in the tech center part in one classroom and, um, all the college professors from, uh, WNC will come down to the high school. Um, they'll give all your lectures, so we have a math class, um, an economics class, a sociology class. And it's basically just like a, a different experience than our regular high school classes since we're in a college environment, um, with college professors, learning, um, in a different way. Not exactly different things, but just learning in a different way. A lot of it is more like you, it, it's, you have to, you have to want to be there and you have to, like, do the classes. But it's a really good experience if, uh, you commit to it. I know next year it's going to be all at WNC, so when, when you're a junior, it's at the high school. But when you're a senior, it's all through the college. And then when you're through the college, you get to learn, uh, you get your associates, as the principal is saying. And, um, you can choose what you want your associates in. So there's like a bunch of different things that you can do and different pathways that students choose. But it's just a really good college experience that you can get an early start on. If, if you like are nervous about what to do after high school or you're worried about financials, stuff like that, then, um, it's a great program because you come out of high school with your associates and, um, a lot of jobs will be more accepting to that. And, um, having that on your record is just super good. So yeah, like, that's why I like Jumpstart.
Right, Aggie, we're back to you, man.
Hello, my name is Aggie Campbell and I am currently enrolled in three very different CTE courses, which include graphic design, ROTC, and early childhood. And I'm just gonna talk, talk about those probably. I like these different classes because they all are things that I enjoy to do. And, um, let's see, um, hmm, hmm. In ROTC, we learn about like leadership, like leadership, like traits and principles. Right now we're learning about like requirements for if you were to take off like an airplane. And, uh, let's see, in graphic design, we just do a, a lot of like our own work to learn how to use computer programs to create like logos, magazine covers and things like that. So like, for example, like I think next year there will be a chance to possibly maybe even get paid for it to make logos for how, however, people, certain people would want. And in early childhood, it's one of my favorite classes. We, like, the first year was ba, was a lot of learning about the, uh, first five years of development of a child's like brain. And it also includes a lot of like firsthand experience because we go out pretty much once a week to elementary schools and take part in like kindergarten preschool classrooms and just help out however they want us to help, help them out. And it's just a lot of fun in all of my classes. Th- this year, I'm hoping next year will be the same. Good.
Before, Angela, if you don't mind, before we get started with you, cause I know you're gonna give us a, kind of the post-graduation perspective and I, I want to hear that. I just wanted to ask you three that are in school. I appreciate hearing about the classes you do and the study. How's your, you know, just in terms of overall support from teachers and staff? And in your case in Jumpstart, you know, working with college professors, you know, really with both in the high school as well. You know, do you guys all feel like you're well-supported, you've been well-prepared? You know, what's kind of your behind-the-scenes experience?
Uh, yeah, so with Jumpstart it's nice because the college professors obviously are usually at WNC teaching all the college kids. But they come to the high school knowing that we might need a little more help. So they're always willing to stay after class with you or, um, help you come into colleges. Like a lot of tutoring opportunities at the college and they help you with that. And then I have Mrs. Hendy as my main counselor through the high school. But then I also have, um, Coach Barlow and he's my Jumpstart counselor. So a lot of support, I have two counselors and a lot of help there, yeah.
Um, for AP courses, I would say that teachers are always there and they're willing to help you after school or during lunch or even during their passing period for you to get those resources. Like I mentioned, I was an ESL student, so like English can be challenging sometimes. So for AP Lang at the, my first year, it was really difficult and I struggled a lot. So, um, with the help of Ms. Gordon, she's my counselor, um, we talked to Mr. Macy and we, um, told him what was my struggle with the class. And he gave me resources for that. So like I have a book where I look at it sometimes when I'm writing essays or have to look at the rules for when I have to start testing for the multiple choice in May. It tells me about how to use McCollens, Comas, Bears, Adverbs. Um, so the resources are always there for you. Um, I think my biggest resources, um, have been Ms. Gordon, cause whenever I need help, I go, okay, freaking out. I have this in this class, I need help. Um, I think the support's always there, it's just knowing how to use the resources. Like if you go up and say, okay, I'm struggling and I really need your help with this, could you expand a little bit further? They always go the extra mile to explain that to you. So it's just asking for the help, for you to get the help that you need. So next year, um, I am really big on the ESL program since I come from the ESL program. I believe that having the right support will help you learn English and I am thankful that I did. Um, I want to become an ESL teacher for the high school students since I work a lot with, um, newcomers from, um, the Latin community in Latin America. I give tours in the mornings and I make them feel comfortable and welcome to the school. And it makes me really proud when I see them walking in the halls, making friends, playing basketball when they can't communicate English, but they're playing with each other. Having them know that I'm their resource when they need help makes me really proud. So I know that if they look for those resources, they'll get them. So it's just looking for that resource. Cause we do have them at the Carson High School.
My, my overall, so, like, the support I get in my CTE classes is, in my opinion, like phenomenal. Because if I were to need help with anything, even if it doesn't have to do with my CTE courses, I can go into a teacher's classroom, ask them for help about, like, whatever I need help with about their class and they will help me like right away in whatever way I need. And it, it's overall really good. And support from counselors too is very great, cause you can pretty much go in, I mean, a lot of times you do have to schedule an appointment, but still if you need help with like anything to do with school, they're there and ready to help you out with anything you need.
Thank you.
Joe, if I could, I'm sorry. I want to congratulate you guys for the effort you put into your schoolwork. But what I'm curious about is what motivated you to take Jumpstart, AP, CTE? Cause there's a lot of students who are not motivated to do it. So what was your motivation?
I think my motivation was mostly just like the opportunity that comes out of it. And, um, like coming into junior year is a year when you start having to really decide on what you're gonna do in the future. And, uh, with Jumpstart, it's, uh, you still have to think about it, but, um, you come out with your associates and you can choose your path and Jumpstart. So the motivation for me was really just the, the opportunity that it provided.
I think for me, taking AP courses, um, was the idea of just taking the class now and having those credits for whenever I wanted to move on to college, just because the difference between AP and Jumpstart sometimes becomes with not a lot of out-of-state colleges take Jumpstart, just because it was started in Nevada. So I looked a little bit more into that. Um, I wanted to go out of state and I knew that AP would help me more when coming to look to those colleges and universities. So that's why I took AP.
My motivation to take my CTE courses is I just really wanted to do stuff that I enjoyed throughout high school and, you know, not stuff that I wouldn't enjoy, cause who, whoever wants to do that. Um, and I, I, that's my thing. I just like to be happy and enjoy the moment in whatever classes I take. And I'll figure out, like, if I have to make big decisions about my future, I'll figure that out when I get to it. But right now I'm just in my classes to enjoy them for however long I need to, I want to.
Uh, thank you guys. And, uh, were your parents a part of your motivation at all to, uh, get involved in these programs?
Uh, they definitely like supported it, but, um, I had two older brothers on the AP course, so I was a little different from them. But, um, they just supported, um, my personal motivation for the courses, yeah.
I think this is gonna answer a little bit more into the Hispanic question that you asked. For me, it was a little more complicated to explain what an AP college course was and why wasn't I taking Jumpstart since they were, kind of were what Jumpstart meant, just graduating a little bit earlier in their heads. Um, I think the biggest thing for my parents was like understanding what was that difference and what would it? and what would it take for me to like be in that class. Communication with counselors is always the best. Like, my counselor explained to me how it worked and I explained it to my grandma, like, okay, if I take this and I take the other one, this are the difference, the benefits, the downfall. Overall, the support has always been there. So if I'm struggling, they'll go, okay, so what have you done to look at the problem? Have you looked for your resources? But they're always there to support me, like if I want to take an AP, okay, let's do it. Do you need help with something? Do you need help paying the, for the test? So it's mostly informing them of what everything means, because I know that a lot of students are not involved in CTE just because they don't know how to explain it to their parents. Like, oh, I'm taking this class because I want to be this and I want to get involved with that. I know AP courses can be challenging because of the whole idea that it's a college class already. So they're like, are you ready? You think you're ready? Because that was the main question of my parents, like, are you sure you're ready? Do you really want to take the challenge? And then for Jump Start, same thing, it's just reassuring them that it's okay for your student to try, and if it doesn't work out, we can always work a second plan, because we have options and resources. So they can get the help that they need if they think they're failing and it's not going the way they thought it would go, we can work on it and they'll get the help that they need.
My motivation is like from my parents was really just like, they just support my choices in whatever I would want to do. And I do have motivation from, a lot from my mom to keep like doing what I'm doing and like moving forward with whatever I want to do. It's, and that's pretty much it.
Thank you, you guys are all very impressive, thank you.
So I do have a question for you guys. How is your involvement in these rigorous programs impacting your extracurricular activities in the high schools?
With Jump Start, I honestly say that it makes it a lot easier, because it's a shortened schedule. So for the high school schedule, you'll be arriving at, first class starts at 7:40 and ending at 2:05. But with Jump Start, your first class is starting at 9:20 and last class is ending at 12:40. So you have a lot more time for personal stuff, like personal growth for sports. I do wrestling and football and I haven't seen a problem yet. I can still take our A1 weights class that is through football. And I can, I can still show up to practices and everything and the workload isn't too much, it's definitely, you can handle it, you just have to be committed to it.
With AP courses, I think that it gives me the opportunity to be more involved in school. I am part of the leadership, leadership class. I am involved in Blue Crew, and I'm also involved with the Latino Club. And I just feel that it gives me the time to do other things, since a lot of the work gets done during class. And most of the time going home is just take a unit, you have a week to finish it, bring it back, but look out at it. So I think it just takes like a weekend to finish everything and then I have the whole week for myself. So I get to do after-school activities with Leadership and Blue Crew and stay-for-lunch activities with the Latino Club, go into the middle schools, like right now we're doing with Blue Crew, give the tours in the morning. So I think it just gives me the opportunity to have more time to do things that I want to do during school hours, and then the rest of the day I can have it for work or personal stuff.
My CTE classes, like, well, what I would call my extracurricular activities would take a lot of homework for me. I take a lot of time to do my homework and my CTE classes lessen that, because it's, again, it's more of like hands-on experience than homework. So it definitely lessens the amount of homework I would have to be doing if I wasn't in those CTE classes.
So I'm suffering from a little bit of PTSD, because I had two moms warn me their kids would be here, and then they get sat right in front of me. I'm like, what is Angela and Augie gonna do? So brings me back years and years. But one of the things I think is great, and you know, Laurel and I have been in meetings talking to people about this, in Carson City, you know, we have the one large, large high school. And one of the things I think is most impressive is we do have all of these programs and we do have so many students who are involved and so successful in these programs. And so it's really something to be proud of for the entire city. And I hope that students today realize all the opportunities you're given, because any of these programs would have been huge for me in high school, because I'm a first-generation college student. So things I had to figure out as an adult, you're able to get exposed to as students, you know, children. And so it would have just kind of provided more opportunities and made that pathway a lot more clear as I was going through. And so I think that's impressive. But one of the things that really standing out to me when I hear this is I see students taking ownership of their learning. And so they're, you know, you're enrolling in classes that are of interest to you, you're trying to help new students realize the pathways to be successful and to be included in Carson High School. And you're taking those steps to be successful in the future. And so I find that very impressive and I look forward to hearing the great things Angela's been doing since she's graduated. So things, presentations like this are super inspiring to me, because it just illustrates what I know are the great things happening in our schools, but it's great to see the product, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I think, speaking of the product, Angela, I think we've, you know, last but not least, if you will, we'd like to hear from Angela, because, and you'll give us your background and history.
Yeah, so Angela Ramirez, I am happy to give my testimonial. I graduated through the Jump Start program in 2018. So my Jump Start journey started in my sophomore year. That's when you make the decision to go on board. And I wasn't on track for my math class. And so what I did was, the summer before, went up to WNC, took the Algebra II class that I needed to take, so that way, that first year of my junior year of high school, I was ready to go. And for me, Jump Start was really the opportunity for the conversation to open up of what am I gonna do after high school? You didn't need to make the decision right when I started. It wasn't like the first day of Jump Start, they said, you need to choose your Associate of Science or Associate of Arts. They gave us the opportunity to take those classes, figure out what we wanted to do, see what degree would be more geared towards what we're gonna do after high school. And when we were in that program, we had the cohort, so we were in a group of students, we were doing it alone. We had our coaches, we had our professors, there was a lot, a lot of support that we had. So I really enjoyed it, I still remain friends with some of those students that were in my cohort, so that's really nice. And then when I get to the point of graduating and then transitioning to going to UNR, I feel like Jump Start gave me that opportunity to really understand what a college, a college class would be. So I knew the outline of the class, I knew that I would have to, like you said, take ownership. I would not have somebody telling me that I need to turn in assignments once I got to college. So after you graduate from high school and you make that transition, you move to a new school, I was lucky enough to have moved to UNR, to like that little bubble, you know, fully immersed myself in it. And being within the university campus is in and of itself such a big transition. And because of Jump Start, I feel like the school component was not something that I really had to adjust to as much. I really took a lot from it. So I graduated in 2022 from UNR with my Civil Engineering degree and a minor in Construction Management. I completed that in four years. And that, on average, in and of itself, is a five-year degree at UNR. And now I am happy to say that I've transitioned and I am working in pre-construction at a construction management firm called Gilbane. I'm really happy that I took Jump Start, it opened up that door early on for me. And I'm happy where I'm at, happy to have taken it. I feel like it gave me that opportunity to grow that confidence that I could take such a challenging degree on. So happy to share my story.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate that, appreciate it from all of you. I don't know if you realize it, but really, all four of you and your peers that are doing all this are quite impressive. And I think what you learned from this, and I think Angela can speak to it, because she's, you know, a couple of years ahead of all of you, is there's no right answer. You know, for some people, it's AP, excuse me, it's AP, for some it's Jump Start, for some it's CTE, some do kind of a combination of different things. And it's, it's all good stuff. I had three kids and they all had a different path. One did what I like to call the general track, one did honors and AP classes, the other one did Jump Start. My Jump Start daughter wound up going to school out of state, as did my son, and didn't have any problem with Jump Start. So it's not, you know, to, for JT, since he's going through it, you know, you're not limited to Nevada. I think the big thing is research, and that's for all of you, is if you know what you want to do and where you want to go to school, make that contact, you know, advocate for yourself and find out what schools require and helps you gear towards that. But I think what you'll find out is every school sees these things you're doing and it makes you stand out from, say, the, some of the other kids coming in, some of the other students coming in. And so you're gonna be more marketable at the college level if you choose to go to college, if you're gonna go into a trade, having these kinds of backgrounds are gonna help you there as well. So, you know, they're all the right answers and it just depends on what your path is. And I just want to applaud all of you. I think, you know, you're all impressive. I know Angela a little bit. She, I guess I mentored her a little bit during her path to become a civil engineer. And, you know, she was exceptional and I'm sure the three of you are exceptional, and I just want to applaud you for your efforts, because it is extra work, it is extra time, and it's worth it, because you're worth it. So congratulations. Laurel.
Let me get this on, yeah, I just wanted to say something, listening to all of you. And JT, I remember when you were the not-so-little younger brother, you were always big for your size. And I remember seeing Augie over at Frige too, and Betsy. But all of you have learned through this process how to ask for the help that you need, whether that's through talking to your teachers, talking to your counselors, talking to a mentor, and then how to access the resources that you need to be successful. And those skills are what will help you in whatever path you choose after high school to see. Find a mentor, find your resources, and don't be afraid to ask, because college professors are just as willing to help as your high school. And you're, they have counselors and support, there, they have them in other places. So whatever profession or avenue you pursue, those type, that skill set will help you be successful. So congratulations to all of you.
Yes, thank you, and thank you for your time, your stories were very inspirational. Yes, and I mean, as Mr. Casiope, I have kids that have gone, I think, in every route as well. You know, with the AP, some have done a few CTE classes as well, and then my son is in Jump Start with you as well. And so I do think that, you know, Carson High School should be applauded for all of the diversity that it offers, the different ways that the kids can be engaged. And now we just have to encourage those, the kids that aren't too, yeah, yeah, to get in, because the opportunities are there. And without that, though, I would, you know, you mentioned all this support, and that does, I mean, Carson High School, I think, is a phenomenal high school, and the employees there, the teachers, the paraprofessionals, the administrators, all need, you know, to be applauded as well. You are giving the students a great opportunity, so kudos to all of you, because I know you all work extremely, extremely hard to keep the kids engaged as well. And I would be remiss to say, congratulations JT, on making state for wrestling. We missed that, I missed that on our reports as well, but I know that the wrestling team had, and Coach, you had a successful season. So congratulations on what a great season of wrestling, and I hope you continue.
Mike, yeah, go ahead, please.
And then I would just like to say, we kind of brushed over one of the most important things, which is we're begging for teachers. And so to not only have somebody going into education, but somebody who has lived through it in that example, that, you know, it's hard to learn a new language, and especially at the high school level. And so to have somebody that's coming in and showing it can be done and helping those kids achieve, I think you're gonna be valuable to any school that you work for.
Hopefully it'll be Carson.
Well, there's a guy in the back of room that can help make sure of that.
I would just like to thank Mr. Carstens for bringing these outstanding young people in to give their testimonial, for lack of a better term. It's very inspirational to us as a board, I think, to actually see what our kids in our schools are doing. So thank you for sharing your stories, we really appreciate it, and thank you for bringing them.
I'll just wrap up, if you will, by again, one of the reasons I asked a question about kind of the behind-the-scenes support is because I know we have exceptional staff at our schools, and I just wanted everybody to get a chance to hear that. And from the principals and the administrators to the teachers and the, really, the custodians and everybody, over the years, I've heard great stories about everybody helping our students out. And, you know, this just sheds some light on that. So I want to thank the staff at our high schools for helping these students out, because it is kind of, it takes a village, and I appreciate everybody's involvement in it. So thanks for your time and for all of your time as well. Mr. Carstens, I don't know if you have anything in closing you wanted to do, or if you're good. All right, his support, don't leave ya.
Yeah, we were just talking about moving forward, I think we touched on it a little bit. You know, again, challenges all the time with the costs, and, you know, we just hope that we continue to have that support from our, from our school board and our foundation. I think you can, you've heard how important it is to these students, how important it is to our community, and with Angela's story, I mean, wow, that's, that's pretty impressive. So my kudos to you. And then just, you know, our next steps, you know, again, trying to increase that diversity in our Jump Start and all of our programs, really. And just really trying to make sure that we know how to engage our students. And if, and if it's not one of these programs, what is it that will engage them? You know, first generation, you know, Jackie, are you first generation? Right? And she wants to come back and teach, and I would hire her in a heartbeat, just for the record. She's already got good references, so. We'll do AP and pre-AP training. We have a lot of teachers retiring this year that are teaching AP courses, and so we have a large contingent of teachers going to get trained. And, you know, and really our CTE, just trying to increase a little bit more on the industry-recognized credentials, and just, again, trying to provide all that support. So thank you, guys, for, wait, wait, thank you, yes. Thank you all, and again, Bridgette and Candy and Ananda and everybody, Justin, Josh, Justin, we'll just call him JJ, how's that? I appreciate them, I appreciate our students coming, and it's a team effort. Our school is truly a team effort, and everybody makes each other look good, and we want to have the best possible experience for our kids.
So thank you. No, thank you very much. Any final questions on the board? All right.
I do.
Oh, sorry.
So I just want to say thank you. I know you've been here for a short period of time and you have done so much already, and we really appreciate you looking at the overall student population to see, you know, how we bring all those kids up to par, because we know they all have the potential, just like we heard the stories of all of these kids today. And, you know, of course, my daughter, I can honestly tell you that if we had not had that communication with the staff at the school, we probably would not have gotten her, you know, to take advantage of the program and get her to where she is right now. So again, just like her and all these students, all the students in our district have the potential that these students have, if we provide them with the right support, and that's exactly what you're doing. So we thank you very much for what you're doing. And thank, thank to everyone here in the, in the, in the room. And thank, thank to everyone here in the, in the, in the room and Tasha, Gosh, you know, you and I worked on this since day one. So I think that, you know, you, we can, you know, agree that this program has been a, a very important piece for the success of all our students. And we look forward to the growth.
The only thing we're looking at is whether kids win. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. So we're going to move on to item nine, discussion of possible action to approve proposed changes to CCSD policy 503 compulsory attendance, excuse me, compulsory attendance age. This is the second reading and it's for possible action. Tasha Fuson is presenting.
I'm not, I'm not even going to try. But Angela was my student. That's all I, I'm going to take credit for, for that one. She was my graduate. I was her principal.
You can share our story.
There you go. There you go. So we all get, we all get to, to take a little piece of Angela saying that she was with us all up our path, her path through school. Okay, so thank you. This is our second reading of policy 503. If you remember, really, the intent last time I came was to update the regulation. That's where the meat of the changes were. But we like to try to review policy at the same time as regulation, just to make sure that it's still consistent with what's outlined in regulation. And in this particular one, it was. So really, the only changes that we had was just updating verbiage to include Carson City School in front of District and then updating the references, the NRSs. And again, the reason why I struck those NRSs out was just that they really were not on topic for compulsory age upon, for enrollment. So I thought it would simplify it by removing them. So really, that's the only changes. You didn't have any recommendations or requests for changes last time, so it is exactly like you saw it last time.
Okay, Laurel.
I'm ready to make a motion. If you guys are ready for it.
I'm ready for you to make a motion.
Okay. I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approved February 27th, 2024, as the revised date for policy 503 compulsory, compulsory attendance age.
Okay, we have a motion by Trustee Crossman, second by Trustee Ramirez. Any further board discussion? Seeing none, any public comment on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 10, presentation and discussion on budget assumptions for the Carson City School District for fiscal year '24, '25. This, again, for discussion only, we have Spencer Winward and Superintendent Fueling.
Thank you, President, and members of the board. Today, we get kind of the first look of, of items that are, will be forming and shaping how our budget's going to look like in a couple of months from now when we present the, the final preliminary budget. If you were hoping for a picture of Donald Rumsfeld, I apologize, that is not in here, but we do know what we know and we don't know what we don't know, et cetera, et cetera. So a couple of things, just essentially what we're going to cover in this, items of consideration for our funding, some revenue assumptions that we have and expense assumptions, that everything that we kind of know up to this point in building our budget. It is a non-legislative year, so it does leave us with a little bit more. We know where the dartboard is on the wall when we throw the dart, as opposed to last year, where we don't know where the dartboard is when we throw the dart. Items to, that we're considering and that will, will help determine how we shape our budget is our continuing enrollment decrease, ESER step down. We've done pretty well of mitigating that as being an actual cliff fall-off, but it's definitely a step down. The last step might be a little bit bigger than what we were hoping for. Employee compensation, staffing vacancies, strategic plan requirements, and then inflation and other, other operating cost increases that we need to take account for. So this will just kind of take a look of, of how our FY '24 shaped up for revenues up to this point and what FY '25 is looking like. What you may notice differently from what a year ago at this time, we had an enrollment of about 200 students higher than what it actually is now. And that's taken the biggest, made a difference to that. In addition, a year ago, we were, when we were throwing that door, dart at the wall where we didn't know where the dartboard was, we thought our funding was about $400 less per pupil than what it actually ended up after the legislative session was done. So those two changes are, our revenues actually ended up slightly higher than what we had budgeted for a year ago and this time for '24. That's really just so you can see to kind of compare to what FY '25 is looking like. You can see we're budgeting for just about 60 less students is kind of what we've, our studies and Mr. Fueling's expertise has come up with for what we anticipate our enrollment to be for next year. The funding is known, $10,114 per pupil. And so that gives us about, between that, a slight increase in PCFP funding and a little bit of increase for other funding, we're about 2.8 million more than what we had the year previous. So that's always happy. We like to see that. I like to see green on that very bottom line on the right of this slide. Any questions regarding revenue?
Just for clarification, PCFP, is that the weighted funding or what is that? The weighted, weights added to certain students?
Yeah, that is, that is our weighted funds. So our at-risk, ELL, Gate, those, yeah, those funds. All right, some of our expense assumptions, again, roughly 85% of our budget is staffing costs, outlaying benefits, and our steps are going to cost us roughly a million of what we, what was negotiated. Well, the steps from that, that is a little bit higher than that has been in years past because, you know, we saw a pretty big jump in salaries this year from last year. And then negotiated increases across all classifications will be right around $700,000. Our health insurance is going up. We're, we're planning on that going up. That wouldn't be until mid-year and that would be about a $400,000 increase. Rest of our benefits are stable and we're grateful for that.
I'm sorry. Can you go back a slide? So do you put the health insurance out to bid?
So we have a broker that does go out to bid to that and they, as, as I recall, did we have them do a full, we talked about doing that, but they came back at a zero-dollar increase for this fiscal year. So the timing for us to do that again would be August of next year, which we were not sure what that would be. We planned that budget increase, kind of expecting what we would expect. Where that stayed flat, there was no reason to go out to bid for this year.
And when you mean this year, is that this school year? Are we looking into next school year?
It's a little different because it runs on, our benefits run on a calendar year. So for January, they just started through December of this year, there's no change. So for half of the upcoming budget year, there's no change. For the second half, we're planning on an increase to be conservative in, in our estimates. So does that, does that fully answer your question? Okay. That is one of those things, it would be nice if that would run on a fiscal year, but, but when, you don't play with that when they come back with a zero-dollar increase and say, let's try that for six months. All right, other expense considerations, items not related to staffing. We're expecting probably about a 10% increase for our pool pack insurance premiums, which is about a million dollars this year, so another $100,000 for that. And our utilities have just, maybe you have, all have noticed in your household budgets, they are running higher than, than they have in years past. So we've got $200,000 collectively to cover increases in those. Other items related to staffing, we have just over 10 full-time equivalencies in ESER still, and we're working and looking at every, every which best way on, on where those are going to live. That's about $940,000 salary and budget for those individuals. Mostly our curriculum coordinators, work-based learning coordinator, distance ed assistants, and a grants administrative assistant. Those are the people that, that have been funded through there. Our opinion is they're mission critical and we're looking at different ways to fund those and, and move them to general or other funds to, to maintain the level of service that we've had.
I passed this before, but when does the ESER funds run out?
They, I believe, it's the end of this fiscal year, but then I think it goes 90 days beyond that, September of this year. So we wouldn't be able to fund any staffing out of that in next fiscal year. If there are other expenses, we'd have the first couple of months of, of next fiscal year to spend those, within the constraints of the grant, of course. Before I continue, any other questions about, I'll go back a slide, any, any other questions about some of our expense considerations?
Is the pool pack, that's just an estimate. We don't really know it's going to be $100,000 yet, right? The increase?
That's, yeah, that's an educated guess. We won't know until they come back and say, here's what your premiums are. We did see a pretty big increase this last year over, over some minor increases over the last five years. Grumblings in the industry are, are kind of expect another step like what we saw last year.
We haven't had a lot of claims, though, have we?
No, not on composite table. We, we've been pretty fortunate in that regard. We haven't had anything very high dollar. All right, bottom line of, you know, if today were the day to, to present our final budget, what you'd see in it is 80.3 million of revenue. And then our general fund expenditures would be higher than what our revenues are, 81.4 million. And that would be a projected deficit of 1.1 million. That is based on our current general fund staffing and operating costs. That isn't going through and saying, hey, here's some operational savings we think we can make do without. That's, that's making no reductions. It's really, it's kind of essentially taking what we have this year and, and transferring it to next year. And again, that doesn't, the staff turnover. Items that would affect that deficit is those ESER positions that we, that we need to move to different funding sources, staff turnover if we have someone retire and a younger teacher come in at a lesser cost, and non-staffing costs. So it, it is shaping up to look like we'll end up with, with a deficit for preparing our budget to, to be completely upfront. That, that's what I think we'll be looking at this year. Of course, we'll want to do, we, we will do everything we can to minimize that, make that as small as possible, but still not, not cut anything that would be detrimental to the services that we offer our students. Any questions?
Just, I'm, I'm sure you have the grants department looking on what grants are available for those critical positions or essential, you call them.
We do. That, that, those 10.15 FTs would be higher, except we have already worked to, to work some of those positions out of ESER funding to other grant sources. And they're continuing to look at any opportunities that we have for that.
I appreciate the information. I mean, we always talk about not being fans of deficit budgeting and whatnot, but I think what we found over the years is, you know, you kind of plan for the worst and things come in better. So I mean, I, thanks to AJ and Spencer, thanks to you, I think we're, we're in good financial shape and I appreciate that. And quite frankly, this projection of 1.1 is less than some years, quite a bit less than some years past, so. So anyway, thank you for the update. Any, yeah, Rich?
With this deficit being projected, what will that leave our ending balance? Our reserve funds or whatever you call them?
So, yeah, we're, we're right between 16, 17 million dollars on our current ending fund balance at the beginning of this year. Very healthy, given what the, the parameters we can operate in Nevada, that's very healthy. So we'd be looking about, you know, probably 15.6, 16 million or so.
And I do think it's important to remember, so much of this is hypothetical because, you know, we could have 500 students stop coming to school. I mean, hopefully that doesn't happen, but that's going to have a huge impact on the bottom line. We could have 500 kids move in. So it's, that's why we do this multiple times throughout the year because right now, it's not a deficit, it's a projected deficit. Like if all things remain sane, all our assumptions came true, which doesn't usually happen because the last few years, we've been very fortunate and things have changed at the last minute. So, you know, I don't want people to, like, start panicking. We're, we're just looking at the realities right now.
Very true. That, that did just remind me, so the 940,000 of ESER funds, we would have had general fund money to, to essentially cover that had our initial enrollment projections held true. But those have, our, our enrollment has decreased more than we thought it would. And that's where we're ending up with a larger step down for that final ESER step down than what we originally anticipated.
All right, well, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
We're going to move on to item 11, which is approval of the consent agenda. This is for possible action.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as submitted.
Motion by Trustee Walker, second by Trustee Varner. Any board discussion on this? Seeing none? Any public comment on this? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, item 12, informational items. This is for discussion only, no action will be taken. Any question or discussion on the informational items? Molly?
I probably should have done this earlier, but AJ, have we heard anything from Parks and Rec?
Yeah, actually, we got initial kind of mapping, a look last week that I can share. So it's, it's, it's a move, moving along.
Any other thing else for informational items? Seeing none? Item 13, any requests for future agenda topics? Seeing none? Item 14 is adjournment? We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.